Call this meeting to order.
Uh.
Please call the roll.
Bird.
Here.
Henson. Koho Ho Kelly.
Here.
Mormon.
Here.
Elsa Beck.
Here.
Williamson.
Here.
Angstrom.
Here.
Item number two, approval of agenda.
Any changes, your honor?
Or no changes?
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Koho Ho Kelly.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Elsa Beck.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Angstrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Item number three, presentation of petitions and other communications. A, update on Boone Main Street, Holly Spector, Main Street Director, Holly.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much. Inviting me and us to be here tonight and give the first presentation as quarter four. Downtown Boone Main Street Initiative. As you'll see on the screen here, I've put a pretty lengthy, pretty wordy proposal, or excuse me. Presentation together for you tonight. I will not read it word for word, so don't, don't think, oh, my gosh, we're gonna be here all night. So just a real quick outline of the work to date. Our mission at the top there, downtown Boone, a Main Street community, is committed to creating a vibrant downtown through business growth, conservation, and collaborative partnerships. Below there, you'll see the board and board members, official members, and student members listed, as well as the timeline of the two-year application process all the way through my hiring in November. The outline for the presentation tonight, I'll go through the transformation strategies and goal planning. This is a heavy part of the Main Street work that we've got to do. Again, it's pretty wordy, all summarized, but it's also the way that we are held accountable and that we hold our goals and strategies and keep in mind the work that we want to see done. We'll go on to the quarterly economic impact reports, the overview of downtown Boone Main Street's activities, the Q4 financials, and then a summary of the upcoming projects and initiatives. So first, I'll just explain really quick the transformation strategy and role planning. And this is a part of the support that we get from Main Street Iowa, as well as the structure. And the transformation strategies are formed and the planning follows a structured process making like a layered cake. It begins with defining a clear vision and mission, followed by identifying key goals for the next three to five years. A strategy is then developed and achieved, and to achieve these objectives, a detailed action plan outlined with necessary steps. Through collaborative partnerships and planning with the board members in the community, we establish these strategies and goals, which also serve as an essential component to our MSA, Main Street America accreditation. This. The transformation strategy number one here lists creating activity in downtown buildings, reactivating downtown through the rehab of historical building. Attracting a vibrant business mix, catalyze the development of new downtown living, and work with building and business owners to create attractive storefronts. Overall, enhancing the experience, creating new businesses, and attracting customers to downtown. Number two, enhancing the sense of place. Will transform downtown into an inviting destination, contributing to local tourism with local pride, attracting residents, visitors, and businesses alike. Through partner, through public works, street amenities, and creating spaces to gather and a sense of place and pride. Number three, building a strong and sustainable inclusive organization. This happens through the incremental and consistent work of telling the story of downtown Boone's work and strong, and building a strong communication plan for sharing the opportunities for involvement, complete with a comprehensive and diverse fundraising plan for a strong and sustainable program. Okay, we're about halfway there. Anybody have any questions? All right, we'll move on to the quarterly impact reports. And who brought their glasses? Because no one can read that. But again, I'll summarize for you. The quarterly impact reports are also mandated by the state of Iowa and our Main Street America accreditation. They're used to increase the knowledge and understanding of the conditions inside and out of the district, communicate the impact of downtown Boone's Main Street work, and identify opportunities of redevelopment and strategically attract businesses. Something that I've been saying for years now is that you really can't change what you don't measure. So this is essentially the measuring stick of what we're doing and how we can move forward and grow and, and become better. So with this, we gain support with our community buy-in and advocate for the program. And a couple housekeeping things here, this report is always due on the fifteenth of the month following the quarter. An accumulative report will be sent from Main Street Iowa as we build the program. So as we move on to the economic impact. The investments, so we, we report on four components here. Investments within the district, buildings sold, new housing, and the volunteer investment. The actual building rehab investments totaled over a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars just in the fourth quarter. This included ninety-eight thousand, four hundred dollars from private investment and thirty-three thousand dollars from the BDA grant funding. So thank you for that. The buildings sold in the district were two, with a total of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in sales. It was eight twenty-one story street, the Duffy's Appliance Building, as well as eleven oh-two story street, the Whistlestop Cafe. We didn't have any new housing to report, but the biggest takeaway for me and learning through this reporting process is the volunteer investment. There were a hundred and eighty-five logged hours, which totals, when you use the state's criteria of twenty-eight dollars, twenty-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents per hour for a volunteer hour. This comes back as five thousand, three hundred and forty-three dollars of investment within the district again. Tracking the volunteer hours is crucial to the practice that strengthens our organization's credibility. And again, the biggest takeaway here is that many granters require matching funds, and we can use these volunteer hours as matching funds when we look at the grant opportunities down the road.
Holly, what were the volunteers doing?
What's that?
What, what did they volunteer doing? What were they doing?
So those hours helped numerous board members attended the Main Street Iowa trainings. And.
Oh, betcha, okay.
Yeah, yeah, so not necessarily for this particular, you know, on the street. I would be happy to break that down.
No, that's fine. I, I just wondered what they were doing, but I should have, should have realized it was training going on, so.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, the director's activities report here. I got a bit of my, ahead of myself when I used my director's report for this, and I think one thing that I overlooked were the events that happened within the district before and as I had started. So these events included the trunk or treat, which hosted, which was hosted by the Boone Area Chamber and served over eleven hundred people. They also hosted the Small Business Saturday and the holiday open houses. And that really doesn't account for the countless hours that the Boone Chamber has, has dedicated to Main Street in the interim between when we had the Main Street designation, the application process itself, and going forward, her support in the offices. Barna, so thank you, Jen. Okay, all that said, over the past couple months here, you'll see we've really just been laying the groundwork for a successful and sustainable business. I really liken it to essentially starting a small business from the ground up. We've set up an office, tackled all the administrative essentials, participated in multiple trainings, and engaged in consistent check-ins with the Main Street Iowa team. Committees have been formed, and we're thrilled to see our pledge collections and community volunteer efforts gaining momentum. On the financial side of things here, you'll see that we report a total revenue for the quarter as thirty-five thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Our expenditures were nineteen thousand, nine hundred and thirty-one. And again, keep in mind that this is my reporting on Q4 only, and this doesn't represent the work that had all been done previously as well. But a big thank you to the city of Boone as our biggest sponsor and the ability to be here in the partnership for getting the same Main Street get off the ground here. I'll dive into the financials a bit here with the expenditures. And you can see that we spent fourteen thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars within the district. That included the payroll, payroll taxes, leases, website development, and professional services. In the town of Boone, we spent, it is four thousand, six hundred and fifty-seven dollars. And seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars went to the Main Street Iowa, Main Street America trainings and classes. And other two hundred and four dollars are subscriptions that are necessary that we can't receive here. Moving on to our projects and initiatives, and this is really a glimpse looking forward at the project that we've got in progress and coming up. So downtown tree planting, this is an initiative that you guys have supported for a couple, at least a year now. But it was actually a long time before that, before the trees were even planted. But the first year of maintenance and pruning and fertilization are in, and the tree grades are being designed by the fabrication class. And design and installation updates will follow in the next month or so. Radicato Sixth Street Underground, their project includes a facade and renovations for our commercial kitchen. And the catalyst pre-application was submitted on January thirty-first. The Arch Project with George Eckstein, and there will be more to follow on that at the February seventeenth council meeting. The Van Hemmerck Family Terrace, which is a landscaping and retaining wall for street-level player seating. And we're exploring grant applications there and continuing the, the work on the four-point approach for the organization of committees and volunteer recruitment. And you'll see here the Service Club Tour where I'll be at the Rotary Kiwanis PDU Alliance and Boone Area Veterans Society to outfit, right? So as we forge ahead, at the end of the report here, I really just want to extend my deepest gratitude for, to all of you, Mayor Steins, Council, Bill Skerr, and staff. As you, as you are the partners and supported, supporters of this great work. Your dedication and financial contributions make this work possible, and the journey is just at the beginning. The road ahead is filled with promise and opportunity, and together we'll transform downtown to a downtown boom that thrives, inspires, and becomes a beacon of community spirit and economic vitality. The momentum we've generated in these early stages is just the beginning. With your continued support, we'll not only meet our goals, but exceed them, transforming our vision into reality. This is more than just a plan, it's a movement, a shared dream that we're bringing together to life with every dollar, every hour volunteered, and every idea shared. I'm beyond excited to take on this work with you, and I can't wait to see where, what will it keep together. Thanks for believing in the mission and believing in the bright future of the outcome of it.
Any questions?
Sounds busy.
It's exciting, though.
Great, talked a little bit with Mike Hamon about a BDA grant for. I think he's gonna be applying for that fairly soon.
Thank you.
Great grant, at the ribbon kind of. Yep. Hey, thank you very much.
Item D, thirty-two, thirty-three twenty-eight, resolution fixing a date for a meeting on the proposed proposition to authorize a loan and disbursement agreement on issuance of notes in the amount not to exceed one point one three one million dollars to, to evidence the obligation of the city thereunder.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mormon.
Yes.
Elsa Beck.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Angstrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Koho Ho Kelly.
Yes.
Item C, thirty-three twenty-nine, resolution fixing a date for a meeting on the proposition to authorize a loan and disbursement agreement on the issuance of notes in an amount not to exceed eight hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars to evidence the obligation of the city thereunder.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Beck.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Angstrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Koho Ho Kelly.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
D, set a public hearing for February seventeenth, twenty twenty-five at six P M. for the consideration of the sale of a public right of way as described hereafter.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Williamson.
Yes.
Angstrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Koho Ho Kelly.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Elsa Beck.
Yes.
Item four, public comments for items not on the agenda. Pam?
Yes, since you've already voted for the public hearing on February seventeenth, and I wanted to speak about that.
Sure, you can say a few words right now if you wish, but the, the bulk of the discussion should be at the public hearing, but since you're here tonight, you can have some time.
Okay, well, since my daughter took off work and.
Certainly.
I wanted to talk about that situation. I'm just a person, and I live at four two three Franklin Street. And I have lived there for forty-five years. I rarely need that alley, but I have had need of the alley this past December. My husband is in hospice in my home.
Sorry to hear.
And I used to live, live, more or less. No, I used to have a business at eight twelve Story Street, and I wish we'd done some, some of this work at downtown when I was at eight twelve Story Street. But anyway, I'm impressed, just a long, too long to do it, guys. Twenty years too late, but, okay, back to my house. So when my husband's in hospice, I need to have use of the alley to get to the west side of my backyard. Because I have apparently adopted a, what kind of dog is it? A rescue dog that's been abused. So I have to have gravel arrive and a house for the dog. Because this is, this dog's been abused, so now we're gonna treat her like royalty. Okay, so timing is important because the December deadline for the dog to arrive, we have to have the gravel arrive before the house arrives. And the neighbor, we asked the neighbor to move his pickup out of the open alley. Because he has a blade and he's got his nice pickup there, and we asked his wife nicely, and she said, yes, they'd move it, and he didn't move it. So because of time period, I had to have the police involved two different days. Because it's three times, and then you can have this pickup towed. So I used to be Christ-like to him and give him goodies at Christmas, but apparently this year I didn't because I mean, I had the police involved. Anyway, I don't want him to buy the alley because otherwise I don't have any west way to get into my backyard. And who knows what I might want to do, because he's already got stakes and he's already parking again in the alley, which is still open until you decide it's not. And so I would like to either you keep the alley open and don't take his money, or we have a bidding war, and I have an opportunity to bid against, bid, bid against him. So that we can keep it open. Because I don't like stress, and I got enough in my life. So that's what I want to say.
Sure.
So have I added enough stress?
Sorry.
Cat, rescue dog, and husband in hospice. That's enough. Yeah. So that's what I wanted to say, and I, I. He's just, he's been very difficult to handle. And I, I know that he thinks he owns it, and I don't, and it's fine if he, if, if he puts his pickup there most of the time. It's just that in the last forty-five years, I've only had to ask him to move it once. But if he, if he would move it, that would be fun, but just as a problem with, you know, apparently he, he thinks that he, he owns it already. So that's my problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will have the public hearing on the seventeenth, but council's heard your input on it, so they can consider that prior to that time as well. If you do wish to come back and speak again, you can certainly do that. So I just want to make sure you know that as well, and then the council will have a decision made on the seventeenth, a little bit of time to consider that for that date.
Do I have any other options?
Well, it depends on what council decides at that time to how they structure their decision. So.
I already, I understood that he's already offered the purchase, the alley.
I'm not certain, okay.
Yeah, he's offered to, and it's gone through P N Z, P N Z recommended approving it, and then at the last council meeting, Dave brought it to the council to update you and then to prove setting a public hearing to have it on the seventeenth to approve the sale.
So is it too late for me to make an offer? I, I was too busy with my husband's caregivers. I had to switch caregivers, and of course, you know.
Makes sense, just have them both here at the hearing, and then hash it out there.
I had, had to.
Yeah, I would, I, I think the billing official there will probably have a follow-up conversation with the person that made the offer. The public meeting isn't till February seventeenth, I would encourage you to come back for that. I'm assuming our billing official will talk with that gentleman and make sure he's here. You can both give your sides and then counsel and decide what they want to do. In addition, our city attorney, now that he's aware of it as well, he can have some options here for counsel on the seventeenth. Make sense?
Lost a little time.
I'm assuming a cop will be present at that?
We always have an officer.
Protection.
Okay, so good. That all you need? Everything?
Yeah, well.
Good change? Very good. Any other comments from the public for items not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to item number five, reports of standing committees. A, policy administration, Williamson.
What, you know?
B, public safety, Hillsback.
No report.
Utility, Angstrom.
Well, we'll just have a meeting on the seventeenth, four thirty.
The economic development, Mormon.
No report, your honor.
Six department reports, building official, Dave. City Attorney, Rick.
No report, your honor.
Uh, Director of Public Works, William.
In December, we were approached by one of the citizens that lives here at the, at the ten sixteen Second Street address. She found it very difficult to get to her house, come and, come and go from her street. And she, she requested a public safety to be put on for alternate parking. One of her requests, reasoning was it would be a continuation of the no parking, one block to the east or to the west of her, so it would just be one, one continuation. I asked her to let us investigate this and look at it. Since that time, I went back and I found another request from another neighbor that could not get access to herd of buses. The herd of buses wouldn't come down the alley because they couldn't make the turns, and I have also had to bring pickup snowplows to the area twice because our big trucks couldn't fit through a lot of streets. I've talked to Police Chief Winkle, he is in full support of it, I am in full support of it. It would just be a continuation of the ordinance and the code, one block to the west. Angela is here, if anybody has any question for her, she was the request, requesting party from the citizens.
Currently, it's both sides.
Currently, it's both sides, it's a fairly narrow street.
It is narrow.
She's requesting to go to alternate.
Lisa, that's right by your house.
Yep, it's black light. And there's something very crowded, bottle decking there. I think it's because there's less, fewer places to park off the street.
I think the stop sign, coming in and approaching the stop sign in a controlled intersection kind of.
Yeah.
Kind of affects it also.
Yeah, I think it's.
It sounds like a good idea to me.
I think it's a good idea.
Yep.
I'm looking for a request to bring something to you guys, so seventeenth.
Council can make a motion, direct staff to prepare ordinance change to bring for you for a first reading at the next meeting, and then Rafe will put that together.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Angstrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Koho Ho Kelly.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Elsa Beck.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Number two is a review for the Prairie Place Housing Development. It's that time where we need to come down to an agreement on lighting and our lighting choices with a developer and a line energy. Takes quite a while to get these items, and it's time we move forward to make the agreement. Once a decision has been made on the light choice and style, then we enter into a resolution with Alliant and an agreement for that. For the future payment cost, the developer pays for light, and then we pay a monthly service fee in lights. Going through Alliant's options, they've cut them back a little bit, but we found one here that looks like more of the smaller residential areas like Aurora, Southeastland, South Jackson. And we felt that it fit the area and the theme for the housing area. So with your recommendation, we'll move, acceptance of that, we'll move forward with that.
We're okay with it.
I know the developer and Alliant were already making motions toward, motions towards, so they could get the ball rolling for, some of these products have over a year timeframe to deliveries.
Need a motion to move forward?
Yeah, yeah.
Take a motion to move forward with purchasing her without those lights.
Thank you.
Please call the roll.
Bird.
Yes.
Koho Ho Kelly.
Yes.
Mormon. Buck.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Angstrom.
Yes.
Lastly, Mayor Steins and I have been having little discussions on citywide cleanup and how we can sustainably move forward with this program and keep it going. So I'm gonna bring a little proposal to you at the February seventeenth meeting, just kind of think about anything, if you've got anything you want to bring forward to it. Think about it.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, go down to F, Recreation Director, Nate.
Thank you, your honor, counsel. Just wanted to kind of give a report from the town hall we had last week. I'd like to thank Mayor Steins for being there, and we gathered teams and clubs, mostly sports clubs and teams. From presidents to coaches, citizens showed up just to kind of hear and be a part of the conversation. We talked about opportunities to improve, we talked about superlative exists, and oftentimes those kind of go sideways. They're good in this instance, they're, they can be improved in this other one, so we discussed a lot of that. We had about twenty-five or twenty-eight or twenty, and got to hear a lot of feedback about, you know, the constraints that we see, the good things that are happening. And discussed some solutions or some ideas, and I think there's a bigger conversation that can happen probably again frequently as we go forward. We, thanks to Jen, we kind of thought we would propose utilizing the community events calendar that her website hosts to kind of get games and things on there. So everybody kind of knows that they're planning spot or a hub and kind of find some of that, because we heard, you know, there are times when there's a, you know, games slated on the same field somehow, that just happens, and that's, you know, can be unavoidable at times, but trying to get everybody kind of on that same page if we could. And I'm, we had representation from the school there and how the school and the scheduling of a lot of things is kind of cumbersome to them occasionally. And seeing how we might go forward and making things better for all of the teams across the board, not just necessarily city programs, but working with everyone so everyone has access to things and things. So, I don't know, mayor had any, thinking one of the same, but.
No, it was a, it was a good turnout, a good conversation to have and get that initial icebreaker for the different clubs that don't normally interact with one another to come together and discuss a little bit.
Yeah, I, I think there was some cross domination that hasn't happened, and I think that's pretty good.
Can you summarize just briefly, what, what were the strengths that people felt we already had going on? What were the good things, the positives?
So I think positives, you know, we have a lot of participation, we had high turnouts for things, community support, and that civic pride component I keep always hammering on. We have businesses that are supportive of teams, we have this volunteerism with all of these themes and all of these clubs. So we, we have strong pockets of that happening. We do have expertise, we have people who know how to coach and know how to teach, doing those things. And I think the development of the program, some are longstanding. And, uh, I think the development of the program, some are longstanding and they're, you know, continuing in that and some have popped out recently and they're being developed very well. So those were.
So a lot of good, a lot of good, strong.
Very good.
Were they main kind of concerns or things that they say, we really need to address this?
Yeah, I I think it's pretty common, no matter where you go, that space and scheduling and facilities, those are always. Probably going to be some of the things here. Um, cost of like travel teams and stuff like that, that's kind of maybe a separate issue that did come up. Uh, but, you know, there's only so much grass. There's only so many gyms. There's only so many things like that and getting them all scheduled. So everybody. You know, good shot at access. It's it's always, you know, it's a it's a ball of yarn. You have to find the end to it.
And are you doing a lot of that, you're doing the scheduling?
So, no, I haven't been asked to do that, but I I I do think, I do think it's, um. You know, uh, it's especially speaking of the school, if there's things that are happening there that would make it easier on them if. If the city took it, like, one example was adult volleyball. Uh, it's just kind of been. Happening with without a firm structure. Maybe there doesn't need to be a firm structure, but if that's something that can happen and that it consists of time and that's something that we can do, it might help them. For instance, not saying that's what needs to happen.
But a group of participants is made on doing that.
Yes, yeah, they've they've been doing very well on there. But I think, you know, the school has finite resources and and time the buildings open and things like that. So. Um, making sure everyone's on the same page and it's a fair crack is always a very important step.
Yeah, we have very limited softball and baseball fields, so. And you're talking, that's Parks Department. They're the ones that schedule that, don't they?
I will say that, you know, emphasis, I I haven't spoken about it yet since I was, it was gone Friday, but, um. You know, are there patches of grass where T-ball would be appropriate or, you know, three and four year old soccer game?
I think you ought to utilize that space next to, uh. Um, the Beckwood Center. That that property can come back there.
Spoken about that. Is this an appropriate place? It's flat. You you can have T-ball. You don't need a fence. You don't need a backstop or if it's.
Soccer.
Soccer, like football, you can, you can get those things. You just need kind of need an open space. Obviously you want it to be comfortable to everyone to get there, but.
That's kind of sad that that space doesn't get used.
It's a great opportunity.
It's a big space too.
Any other questions?
You know, when we looked at that.
I I do that, that whole big area.
Any other questions for Nate? Thank you. D Engineer Perry.
Thank you, your honor. Um, at your last meeting, you talked about, um, increasing the pump station size and the force man. Uh, from the Daisy side and also bringing the force man all the way to the wastewater treatment plant. And this, uh, resolution is. Is the, uh, amendment to S E H's agreement to design, uh, those increased, the sizes and so forth because of their additional cost. Do all that work. And that's basically what we're approving this evening is the agreement for both designing construction services. Um, this cost was a big, including the cost that we talked about last time and then everybody gave approval to move ahead with this. So this is just the next step in that process.
I make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Koho Ho Kelly?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Hillsaback?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Engstrom?
Yes.
Yes. No. Uh, public safety chief Adams.
No report, your honor.
Keith Weebold.
Yes, Sharon. Uh, I was approached by the, some people from the Boone Historical Center about, uh, adding a handicap parking space on the street in front of their, uh, building. Um, right now there is no, uh, no such space. They do run out the basement floor of that a lot for various events and whatnot. So. Um, bringing forward that to to that to you guys.
One?
Just one, yep. It'd be that. Fourth or fifth, I can't remember how many stuffs. It'd be the closest one to that basement entrance. Yep.
Oh, that's their handicap entrance.
Yeah, there's.
Four or five back.
Yeah.
Many of the clothes.
That makes sense to me.
It does.
It'd be great.
I would, so.
So.
Yeah, make a motion to approve that.
Second.
To direct staff to bring forth, it'd be an ordinance to direct staff to bring forth an ordinance to address it.
Yep.
I'll make that motion to.
Second. You pull the roll.
Mormon?
Yes.
Hillsaback?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Engstrom?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Koho Ho Kelly?
Yes.
Uh, second, thank you. Uh, secondly, uh, we're still taking applications for our systems police academy. So if you know somebody, um, that hasn't done it, please encourage them to sign up. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, but you should.
It's a good time.
It is. Amazing.
I, Assistant City Administrator Andrea.
Uh, in the consent agenda, you will find a resolution, uh, approving the fireworks agreement. Um, it's, uh, slated for Ju-July fourth at nine thirty or at dusk. Um, cost is thirteen thousand five hundred dollars and we have a rain date set for July fifth.
Then we budget. At thirteen and.
That is at a hotel motel. We do have money, um, from donations and the donation.
Uh, J City Administrator Bill.
Thanks, sir. I have a couple of items. One on the agenda. Uh, I thought it was important with with all the information that we're receiving, uh, what could be happening at the legislature, the session. For continued property tax cuts that will affect our revenue. Uh, as you know, Jumpstart Boone is an ordinance and it's a, uh, economic development incentive. And what that ordinance states is that. Any, uh, improvements or new, uh, projects that involve commercial, there is an automatic, if they apply for it, an automatic one hundred percent tax abatement for three years, the value. In the residential area, excuse me, it's it's, uh, seventy-five thousand dollars tax abated for the first five years. Of the value of the home. Um, if you remember, uh, Dave had that in front of council here a few, so that's really what we're talking about, those abatements that go to the county. So what, uh, so I'm not asking for any action tonight or anything like that, but what I would like you to think about is. It, as we go through the legislative session and the legislators down there do take some action on further property tax cuts. As you, like I said, that's going to cut into your revenue. I think, uh, this body may want to look at those incentives and see if they they're, we're still able to do it because. Giving those incentives as well. Do that you're not getting a certain amount of time. And so, uh, someone say that builds a new home or or a commercial, um. They're going to benefit from the tax cuts, right, that that we're told that certainly could be made this year up down to legislature in addition to this. So. Uh, what I propose to you is to think about whether or not the city can afford those incentives anymore, uh, if they make those tax cuts. So I'm not asking for any, uh, action tonight, just something for you to think about. That it may be something that you may need to address in the future, depending on what they do at the legislature this year. And I'll answer any questions that you have. If the commercial was hundred percent for the year.
Yes.
So would we just, uh, one possibility would be to modify it? I mean, not not eliminate it, but.
Could modify, change ordinance?
Yeah.
Or you could eliminate it or you could leave it alone. Yes.
One, one thing to consider, if I may add, um, the way that the general fund combined levy levy is set up now, uh, you know. It takes on all of the growth in the property tax valuations. It doesn't matter if it's new or existing. And so if we get additional properties and improvements to properties. That would add to the potential tax revenues we would get. But it's curbed down with the old law and they may cap it exactly at two percent. In which case we'd have to provide more services. On top of everything that's been done and the person that built this home or did the modification will get an additional tax incentive. So. That would shift the tax burden to other folks in the city that are not making those improvements. It's a very delicate situation and thing, you know, that's what I mean, thinking about not getting. A big change, but those are the implications if this, especially if they do the two percent hard cap on growth is.
This was, very well, it's the main topic of discussion when we went to the Ames Alliance Legislative Session. Um, with property taxes, they just need to leave it alone. Like monkey with it every year, they reduce property taxes. So they can say, hey, we reduced your property taxes, but they're, all they did is shift the burden to us. That's all they're doing. They're not, not really reducing it because we only have one choice to, or two choices. Either have to cut services to make and balance a budget or we have to raise taxes. So they're not really cutting taxes. They're just trying to make themselves look good and then we end up airing the brunt of it.
Mm-hmm.
So I think modifying it like Linda suggested is probably the way to go. I I don't think, uh, we don't want to limit it. I'm sure. Pepper doesn't want to eliminate that right now with her new addition going up and we won't. No, that that's, that's separate. I'll, if I could add, that's a separate development agreement that's already in place.
And that's a good point.
Uh, what I'm talking about is the automatic universal round. Yeah, if it's a housing development, we're going to meet with the developer and we're going to. Negotiate and talk about that. So that would be separate from it. You're good.
But that's a very.
Yeah. Right.
Well, we'll really have to wait to see what shakes out the legislative session by.
Yeah, and we don't know that for sure, but we can go ahead and prepare. It's just a heads up for you to to think about that case that happened. I want to look at.
And Bill's been talking to Greg at the Alliance too about other cities that have modified or changed as well. So he's getting some data from other places. Certainly not feeling.
Also have any data on how much this is being utilized?
We had a report last.
Yeah, we had a report last.
Okay.
Yeah, that report each year gives the value of the, of the projects that are going for tax abatement. The, uh, commercial, I don't remember the residential because there's so much more, but just on this year's, it was one point three million in evaluate, in valuation. So it's significant. You can punch it up on the agenda from last week. Okay, next, uh, item is just an update on the hotel study. I've almost got it completed. As, as you know, I sent it to you all to review. A couple of you responded to me, just to me, thank you for not responding, uh. As a group, I appreciate you not doing that. And, um, so we're going to move forward. I hope to get it out to a couple, uh. Uh, vendors or companies, uh, the week of February tenth. And I'll have a discussion with them on, on what they think is an appropriate time to get it in. Research I've done shows that once it goes out. And you, uh, sign with a company, they need, uh, sixty to ninety days to complete it, to do it properly. So. Once we pick a company and that will be brought to you, uh, for your approval, uh, it it'll be at least sixteen to ninety days. And I'll answer any questions you have. Okay, my last item, uh, mayor and council, uh, this is your official notification. That I'll be retiring in July, first week in July. I've had conversations with the mayor and and that process has started for a, a. Search for my replacement. And I believe the mayor will, I don't want to speak to you, but I believe you'll have and you'll be having some conversations with two, uh, uh, consultants this week. Uh, to get those proposals that he'll bring to you. Thank you.
I'll answer.
Well, congratulations on that.
Yeah. Silent over that. We're sorry.
Say what I'm thinking. I'm moving to deny.
We do want to thank you.
I'll leave that to the legal.
We do want to thank you for your service.
I appreciate that.
Very much appreciated.
Thank you, Phil.
Yeah, so I'll be working with, try to get some proposals from consulting firms so that we can, I'm running on those in the next few months. Uh, and to have a person identified and hired, uh, for a couple of months of training, uh, prior to that, uh, July.
Say we need to have him hired by. No better than May.
Hey, that's what I was thinking, yeah.
Yeah, I can tell you that the consultants that that I've spoke with, um. Are already on it.
Yeah, right.
To present something to this body.
Got you.
As my committee, uh, the, uh, personnel, uh, I'll make sure we plan a real big party. Which I know is not what we want, so. We'll.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, item number seven, consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda will be enacted as one motion. There will be no subject on these items unless a request is made prior to the time council votes on the motion. Please call the roll.
Hillsaback?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Engstrom?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Koho Ho Kelly?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Okay, uh, number eight ordinances, we have none. Uh, number nine, mayor's comments. Once again, um, thank you again to, uh, Administrator Scaring. Congratulations on the announcement tonight. Um, I I have several board openings that need to be filled for the remainder of the calendar year. Um, if anybody is interested, tell people about them, uh, fill out the form to apply for them. I'd really appreciate that. I have one opening on the Family Resource Center Board. That board meets once a month for half hour, forty-five minutes, and they really set the agenda and how the Family Resource Center is run, very light work for that. See one person for that. I need, uh, somebody for the remainder of the calendar year on the Arts Advisory Board, just as a general member of that. And then I am looking for a chair of the Historical Preservation Board. Uh, so that's a pretty big job and we're going to try to work towards, uh, the downtown district being, uh, designated a historical, uh, district. And so they need somebody with some, uh, understanding of how that works and things like that. So if you have anyone. Uh, that you think might be interested, please do send them my way or send them away to the application so that they can be appointed to be. That is all I have. Uh, number ten, council members, okay. Oh, sure. I didn't know if we could do that. So, uh, we got notification that Holly announced in her presentation that Radicato put in for. Uh, catalyst grant pre-application and we got word that they have been passed on to the finals. So. It'll be considered for a catalyst grant at Radicato slash six street underground. So that's very good news. So I want to thank Andrea, Holly, Brian and Jenny and Chad and the Economic Development Committee for all their work collaboratively to get that. Uh, successful pre-application.
When?
It's several months. Yeah.
I think it's April too.
I thought it's been sometime in the spring. Well, uh, just. Keep your fingers crossed.
Yeah, keep your fingers crossed.
It's tough. It's going to be tough.
This is a tough application.
They put a lot of work into it. Staff did. I really appreciate all that extra work that you guys did for that.
It's a little different than all the other.
Yeah.
It's a little tougher.
Uh, number ten, council members' comments, and we have, uh, one itemized, uh, item for, uh, Councilman Kowel Kelly.
Uh, yeah, so up by DMAC at the corner of Marshall and Park is one of those intersections where. Depending which direction you're going, it's not always clear who should be going. And we've had several. Close calls and one of my, uh, colleagues was, um, totaled their vehicle that corner a couple of weeks ago. So I think we need to do something with that. Um, I was suggesting like the, um. It's, what is the phrase? Cross, cross traffic does not stop, maybe with some flashing lights and Waylon was nice enough to put together some numbers. Um, I'm not sure what the exact right thing is to do. Maybe it's a four way stop would be, make more sense. But I also assume there's some history there that I'm not aware of. So, but I would like to see something to make it safer there for. Our citizens as well as our students.
Put your opinion forward. You've got, you got Hancock, the next block, um, you got parks, um. I mean, the cross traffic does not stop sign, below the stop sign, a, a real good start here, um. So the flashers.
Yeah, ask me, that's your job.
Uh, hey, I think.
Well, I want. Your recommendation, you're going to have to deal with it and police ship's going to have to do a four way stop.
I think part of the problem having a four way stop there is westbound traffic going to school from Story Street that can back up. If there was a four way stop, that could back up pretty rapidly because that is the main parking lot on the north side there.
Right.
So I think that's the, I think the history behind not having that stop is for that reason because. Traffic coming off of Story Street could back up there, maybe potentially on a story street, just getting to us.
I'm just saying that typically we take your recommendation.
Yeah, no, that's, that's a tough one.
Except then we have to have someone to blame if it's.
Go out something to add.
Yeah, I've, I've had this discussion with Wayland and I don't know that we've talked a pair on that. Usually engineers can weigh in on this because. There are certain rules for traffic and things like that. You have through streets and things like, and that, you know, it's always not the best option to just. Put a four way stop up at an intersection where there's issues. to just put a four-way stop up at an intersection where there's issues because then the, the potentials, then you're going to have ask, people are going to ask to have that all across town and you're going to have tra- traffic stopping every block. So some of the things that I think you can consider is, is Wayland can put up signs. Uh what was the wording on the sign that we discussed?
Um the sign said cross traffic does not uh stop.
So we could put up a warning sign to start with to see if that helps. Um or there is an option of putting up a red flat like we did at Hancock and South Lynn. That intersection where the stop signs have on top to have the red flashing light, that would be an option as well. Uh my recommendation would be that you at least try that first before you go to something as as a four-way stop and see if that helps. And also uh law enforcement can watch it across the city. Um but there's always a chance that regardless of what you have, traffic, there are always going to be issues, right? Because motorists don't obey the law. And whether they're not paying attention or they're going too fast or things like that. So I would recommend that we try something along the sign or if you want something on the stop sign, something to that effect. And that's what, red lights flashing are about five hundred bucks.
Put it together.
Or is that the signs?
I wasn't a hundred percent certain of the status of the posts and the signs are there now. Um if those posts are good, we can take fifty dollars off that total. I had on the bottom there um two hundred dollars each for the solar flasher and thirty-four dollars and sixty cents for the sign.
So those are some other options for the council to consider.
Yeah, I, I, I agree. Um going southbound on South Marshall, you know, it's kind of like a free-for-all for a long, long time. And then you get to pick the stop sign. If you're not familiar with the area, see you blowing through, just a little bit of extra warning with the light that cross traffic does not stop would be super helpful.
See, I think that would.
And not very invasive overall.
That warning.
It's a cheap thing.
Yeah, I think so.
I also feel with the four-way stop, there's, there's many people running that new four-way stop and causing greater problems sometimes.
They're not going to be used to it.
Yeah.
So.
So we need a, we would need a motion to put the, the uh solar flashers and cross traffic does not stop um notification on those two stop signs.
There you go, Lisa.
So good.
I have, I have a motion from Lisa.
Again.
I can, on the roll.
Williamson?
Yes.
Engstrom?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Koho Ho Kelly?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Elsa Beck?
Yes.
Any other council comments? Seeing none this meeting is adjourned.